Welcome everyone to the March meeting of Saginaw City Planning Commission. If you are here to present a case, please come to the podium and state your name and address to us for the record and make your presentation. Clarity or just for more information. And when your presentation is done, a simple majority vote of those here present will decide your request. If you're here to speak in the public comment phase of the meeting, please also come to the meeting, state your name and address for the record, and present, make your comments to the commission. We do not have a time limit for speakers, but we do appreciate brevity. So if you see us up here getting nervous, or if this coffee cup is empty, speed it up. That'd be good. So let's begin with the roll call. Mr. Faust?
Zawerko. Doan.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Caloris. Nightingale.
Present.
Taggett.
Hanley.
Here.
Okay, first item of business is our minutes from the January 28 meeting. We've had those for a few days. Do I hear any comments, changes, corrections, additions, deletions? If not?
Move, adoption.
Support.
Been moved and supported, we approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our first case is the Bancroft Site Review Plan for the Site Upgrades. Proceed.
Good afternoon. My name's Alex Temple. I'm with Rural Professional Services presenting on the Bancroft Building and neighboring lot site improvements. What we're doing is we're taking the existing parking lot. We are brought on this contract to remove, or create plans to remove and replace the existing parking lot. We'll be taking out all existing storm sewer, all existing HMA, curb and gutter, retaining wall, and anything else that's in the way there. There'll be the exist, no, we're not messing with any of the buildings. Those will be staying where they're at. We'll be replacing with new curb and gutter, new landscaping, new storm with an outlet coming out on to Federal Avenue, and then one over on to Water Street for the two locations. We'll have two L openings coming into on Federal Street. The entire site will be surrounded by a fence which can be seen on the detail sheets which should have been submitted a couple of weeks ago. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward. We're following all city ordinances with all our parking spaces, handicaps, accessible spots, all our landscaping per city ordinance. Mainly, I'm just here if you guys have any questions, concerns, per your review of the plans.
And we are talking about the sites on either side of Washington.
Yes, sir. Yep, right now it's vacant on the east side there of Washington, and then there's an existing parking lot on the west side.
Do we have any questions about the Bancroft Site Upgrade? Or any comments for Mr. Faust?
The only thing I want to point out is that the south side of the parking lot at 107 South Washington is not owned by the Bancroft yet. The county land bank owns that property, but in your packet there was a letter from the land bank stating that they would sell that property to Bancroft once there's an old bank building on that property that has to go through a special foreclosure procedure or quiet title, and that's in the court system right now. But once that is cleaned up, then it will be sold to the Bancroft.
Any further comments or questions?
How long has been in the court system?
Several months now, but I know the city manager had talked to the attorneys about trying to speed up the process because in this property, if you go back to the ownership, there are people with one 120th interest in the property. So it's possible that there's over 100 owners to that property, and no one has claimed it in years. But, so what the attorney was doing that was in charge of it, he was sending out a few notices to some of the people that they had found as owners, and he was wondering when the judge would say that's enough. But we've asked to speed that procedure up so that everyone that we know will be notified and taxing can be taken quicker on it. It's, no one has paid taxes on that building in years. It's a building on leased land, and no one claims ownership to it. Some of the areas that were contacted said, "No, we don't have anything to do with it." They thought they had signed off.
Is that actually a building, or was that the drive-through bank?
It was a drive-through bank.
Because the other building's behind it, right?
Right.
That's going to stay there. Do you have a date of completion?
Uh, well, it depends on the court date. I know that he would like to start it as soon as possible, but I mean, as soon as we start on it is when we can get in there. I know he was hoping to start on the east side of Washington as, have that done in May, but I mean, as soon as he, this whole project is contingent on him purchasing those two property, those parcels, so until that happens, nothing's going to go forward.
Completion date on the east side then is, you have a target completion date for the east side of Washington?
He's looking for May as his goal. He'd like to, I mean, that's also contingent on the weather. I mean, it hasn't been agreeing with anyone so far this year.
Any further comments or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
You mean at May completion?
Bancroft Building Site Upgrades. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the site plan review for 14002 for the Bancroft LLC Site Upgrades.
Support?
Suction.
Support.
Been moved and supported that we approve the Bancroft Building Site Upgrade. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is the Can Council Site Plan Review.
I'm John Moore, I'm the owner of the Can Site, surveying and engineering, and we're here to present the proposed Can Council project here in the city. With us is Suzanne Greenberg, the Executive Director of the Can Council Bay Region, and Chip Hendrick from RC Hendrick, the general contractor. The site is approximately 10,000 square foot addition to the existing facility on Michigan Avenue with 52 parking spaces. We will have access on Catherine Street as well as Fayette. We have our existing purpose on Michigan Avenue. All the utilities, we are going to tap onto Catherine Street to stay away from that nice little Michigan Avenue that was just being constructed. And so we will have access to Fayette, Catherine, and Michigan with our parking and our access. Property is sold in the new riverfront mixed-use zoning district, so we, we are in the proper zoning. We don't have to apply for any rezoning apps or anything like that, and so it's a pretty straightforward project. It will be a really nice addition to, to the west side here.
It being a major, major addition, does this imply or involve any additional activities the Can Council doesn't do now? Or is it more of the same?
Sure. Good evening. It will allow us to expand the current services that we have, definitely increase our efficiencies, and certainly we are hoping to be able to educate more parents, but it'll be a means of the space necessary. It won't be that we'll have 300 at one time where we normally had 50, but it'll give us the space to fit 75 at a time where now we have 15. So that kind of, that kind of thing. So the answer is yes, we definitely want to serve more families, especially in light of things that have happened recently in our city. We cannot allow children to be harmed this way, and this is just a great testament to how much the city cares, this community cares actually. Enough.
Do we have any further questions or comments?
There's currently four houses on this property right now that are in the process of being, being demoed, and I believe that all those, the habitats already been through there and claiming to it. They think they can reutilize out of those houses.
John, what's your start-up date?
I'm going to defer to Chip on the.
We hope to actually start construction little late, hopefully by November 1st of this summer. The renovations, free labor, might stretch it to September 1st, but we're trying to put it back.
So certainly by the end of the year, the new addition would be functional.
This is for staff, does others, is this anything to do with historic district at all?
No, it is not. The historic district is either just to the south or just to the north of here, but the next block over. Three square feet this addition involves.
It's almost 10,000 square feet.
10,000? And how many more additional parking places other than you have now?
We have 52 total parking spaces that we have planned. I don't think we really had an accurate count of what was there now. We.
Does this expansion involve hiring any extra people?
The plan would be to hire about 2.5 extra people.
2.5?
Within the first year, a year and a half.
Okay, thank you.
Is the part of the addition on the very south end there actually a garage for a vehicle?
Correct.
Since there is a driveway there?
It's for the Can van. It helps us transport our 68 infants to the high schools and the simulators, including that.
Where you do not have a garage now?
No, sir. Actually, we currently lose a core, it's a diesel van that was donated to us by MMR. We purchased it and the core that needs to be charged every night, we lose one about every two weeks. They go missing, so we're super excited to be able to have it inside and charge it.
I would think so.
Come to it dead and at 6 o'clock in the morning, we may even be able to take it upstairs to school.
And you indicated four homes that have to be demolished? In the event that additional parking would be required, say at peak time, what would the contingency plan be? Where would we find additional parking spots?
The street obviously has, you know, parking access if need be.
Both Fayette and Catherine?
Correct.
Would be accessible in the event you were capacity?
Probably we had about 10 more additional spots that would be there repairing homes because the idea would be homes that would be.
Thank you. I also had a conversation with Saginaw Future, and they're trying to find an extra lot or two in that area for the Can.
Isn't there an infinite number of parking places per the size of the building, per use?
There is, and the 52 that are there now are within that. I believe it's one parking spot for every 333 square feet of the building, and I think if I recalculated that correctly, that came out to 39. So they've got extra parking now.
Yeah, I knew there was an infinite number.
Now, the other thing, because that's a riverfront mixed-use district, we can waive parking requirements in some situations, but that wasn't even needed in this case.
Do you have any comments, Mike, on the engineer's report that you've given?
No, I left on the table for each of you the report from the engineering department. I got that at the afternoon. That's there. They approved the project, it just somebody changed it.
Any further questions or comments on the Can Council?
The eastern elevation, that lower section, is that brick?
Yes, it is.
And the upper section is what?
Drywall, plaster. It's a plaster system.
Plaster?
Drywall system.
If there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And the third item on our agenda is request for subway site plan review.
Good evening. My name's Rick Keith. I'm an architect with Woolgast Design Group, 1494 North Graham Road, Freeland, Michigan, and I'm here representing Andy and Jay Patel this evening. They're here in the audience. The Patels are proposing to build a new subway restaurant at the corner of Michigan and Cass, and they're currently in the subway across the street from here. We'd be proposing to remove the house that's on that site right now, and we were at the historical commission meeting last month and met with them, just so you know that.
This is Michigan here in Cass. We're proposing to move the building right up near the park and then put the park around the side and the back. We have a drive off of Michigan and a drive off of Cass also. There's 25 parking spaces planned and that applies to the parking requirements. This is in the riverfront mixed-use area like the previous project was. And we have, we have, we're showing provided here a bicycle rack and some outdoor seating here for even outside. Those are the controls and the dumpster for our vacuum service. And those are the major conceptual ideas that we have to give you any questions. The exterior of the building, probably the best way I can show you that is an actual picture, but it's going to be patterned through the Freeland subway. So at least give you the feel for what the building will look like. It's probably better than a drawing, the actual picture.
Will it be a similar brick construction?
Yes. Is there a drive-through service? This building's not as big as one in Freeland, correct?
It is actually slightly a little bit bigger. This building, you can see in that picture, the building is real long and narrow.
Yeah.
This one's more square.
Oh, square footed, why is that?
This one's 1,707 square feet, and one in Freeland is about 1,600 square feet. So a lot of square footage.
This is bigger than the current location?
Yes.
Quite a bit?
And that's a reason.
This facility's about 450 square feet larger than the current facility. If you've been in there at lunchtime before, it's a pretty busy place.
The parking lot to the rear does slope off, right?
It, it has a slight slope here, and then when you get back to this line, there's actually a rebate retaining wall.
Oh, that's where the steep drop is, though?
Drops off.
Is Cass Street here? Is that that cobblestone?
Yes, yes, it's a brick. We're favored a little bit there.
That stays?
Yes. We don't have to fix something, obviously with the curb, there are curves and a little rotten condition, so we're actually trying to take care of that in the area. We're going to go either high end of that. We did talk to engineering today on the project. We might have final engineering approval to finish that, we understand that. But we have all of the conceptual things where we'd be tying into the sewer and the sanitary storm and children's utilities on there, so we do, they have some that.
If that decaying retention wall were to collapse, who's responsible for that?
Well, that's one of the things we're looking at in this project, how to handle that, so. That's a good question at this point. That's one of the things we're looking at to address.
I did do a survey on this property. The retaining wall is actually on the property on the end of this.
That was going to be my next question.
The property corners are on top of the slope.
Yeah.
That's good to know, because that's obviously a good idea. Approval.
So then it would be somebody else's responsibility? If the wall collapsed.
Obviously, if we're going to go in there, kind of upgrade down, we need to feel we need to upgrade, or we have to get approval from the owner to get the owner to put part of the building there.
Are there any remaining issues with the demolition of the vacant house, or is that ready as soon as?
I think it's ready. We have some issues we have to take care of with the historical commission. When we met with them, they've granted us conceptual approval. We have to turn some people working for them once we're through this.
The historic district commission does not want that house demolished until they know that the site plan has been approved, that there's a letter for financing, and it seems to me there was one.
Yeah, they wanted the soil study.
Right, which I have a copy of.
Soil, what level soil?
They want an environmental study done, and it had been done.
That building caught on fire, didn't it? Was it due to, was it due to power?
I understand that there were other parts to that building at one time, and it's possible that one of those caught on fire.
Because that was, that was a duty power. I'm not aware of that. But, yeah, there was one.
Mr. Chair, I missed the question about the retaining wall. Was that water distribution? I missed the question about the retaining wall.
We were interested in whose property it's on.
The concern was the retaining wall is in a state of decay, and should it collapse, who's responsible then?
Well, the question I would have about that is the, the water distribution from your property, will it, will it flow east into the other property?
No, we're going to, we're going to keep water water in our site here in the parking lot area, and we've got a point right here and a point here. Water here will flow off to the road like it usually does, and then everything from the property line end will stay within our parking area. We're not, we're not letting water from our parking area flow off into the other area. It's all clear there on the front there.
So any, 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 any water on that parking area to the east, east of that property gets retained on your property?
To the east, there.
That's lower.
Yeah, this is lower. It's six feet lower at the east part. So you see this property line right here?
Is that the?
That's basically where the retaining wall is, and then perhaps down.
Is that not the, the north side that you indicated just there?
It's the east side.
East.
This is on the north right here. The car is this way. East is this way.
Okay, I'm with you now. I'm with you now. Excuse me, I got, I got turned around. I was parked in the wrong spot.
Pretty easy to do.
The, 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 the south, the, the south parking area is what I was referencing.
Yeah, the south area is actually higher than this side.
Oh, it is higher?
Yes, it's a lot a step higher.
Will there be a drain in each of the parking areas, or will you only need one in that lower part?
We're showing a catch basin right here, that'll take the drainage for this area right here, and a catch basin in the center here.
Okay.
So it'll whistle all the rain towards that.
That is one of the requirements that engineering gets, how water must move to me. I thought it's all sloping down.
So we have a bigger subway and a much bigger parking lot.
Looks that way.
Sounds good to me. Any further questions?
Completion date on this project?
I think we'd be, by the time we finish up all the plans and engineering for the site, we'll be starting the project around the end of May, and I would think it'd take about four months to do, so.
And the transition from one location to the other, is that going to, is that going to affect the, any, any addition in employees?
We'd be having the additional employees do business on the, we have. So we're working higher at these four and five position places.
How many?
One or two more additions.
I like that brick exterior.
Thank you.
Very good. Further, if there are no further questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Support.
No, we can't support it. It's been made.
Oh, it's been made.
You can't make the motion.
I make a motion that we approve case 14000, Subway at 300 South Michigan.
Support.
Another question, is that contingent upon engineering approval?
I think everything.
Always. It has been moved and supported that we approve the request. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Happy evening.
Thank you.
That is all of our new business, and you will remember that we have the one item of old business to talk about, which was presented to us two months ago, I think. Long time, long time.
January.
Jan, which is the recommendations from the historic district concerning a new downtown or what's called central city historic district. And you will of course remember that Mike gave us the big old thick report, so big that I put mine in a notebook so I could figure out where things were. And we now have our final chance to. And we now have our final chance to look at this, to ask questions about it, to comment on it. And I know you've all been studying this every day since January, so I know you have a lot of questions. And so we'll vote on this tonight, and then we'll then go to city council, and they will make the final decision.
Actually, there are a few steps before that.
Oh, well, see, I'm new, that's, I'm wrong.
This is a, this is a different type of project than anything that you usually handle.
It is?
Because it's a historic district that's being formed, there will be a public hearing in that neighborhood, and the historic district commission also has to obtain signatures from 51 percent of the property owners.
And am I right that that actually comes after the city council?
No, that's before the city council.
It's before, okay.
And then, once all of that's done, then it's up to the city council to make their decision.
So it truly is the people who make the final decision on this, I guess?
At least 51 percent.
Assuming that city council would have no objection, why would it? Can you maybe start us out by reminding us of the benefits of this designation, and maybe in particular, if there are any arguments against it, and what our particular view on this is, what, anything in particular we should be looking at when we consider it?
The central city district is right now currently a national district, which is much larger, it's about 40 percent larger than what the map shows now. But MISTA financed a study on this prop, on this district, and they went through and looked at each individual building and decided that compared to the national district, that some of the resources in the district had been destroyed already, and so that's why they shrunk the district down to about 60 percent. This would be a local historic district, so that means that anyone who wanted to make any changes to the exterior of their property, whether it be the building, their yard, add a shed, anything would have to go before the historic commis, district commission first. The benefits in some cities that have been found is that as these buildings get fixed up and the historical significance is known, it increases the property values. We haven't seen that thus far here in Saginaw that I can say because of our property values just dropping across the board in the last seven or eight years. The drawback to it is that some people don't think that anybody has the right to tell them what they can and can't do with their property, or what color they can paint their porch, and those people have a problem with it. It's, you know, it's historically a property rights country that gives the ownership of the property, the owners of the property, most of the say, so there, there can be conflicts when it comes to that.
The vote of the residents, of course, would be their chance to address that.
Right, it's, it's not actually a vote, the, the property owners have to sign a petition.
Yeah.
And not, not the tenants of the property, but the owners of the property.
Does the designation allow for any additional funding for renovation, grants, anything like that?
At this point, to the best of my knowledge, no. There used to be some historical grants that were available, I believe that most of those are gone now, or all of them. I know in the other districts that there hasn't been any additional funding because of it being declared a local historic.
The historic district commission would certainly know about all of that, I guess.
Right, and based on their meetings, I, I haven't seen any, there used to be some tax breaks, but those have expired. So at this point, I don't know of any historic.
Yeah, the, the story, I forget the exact title, but that was a tax credit that was considerable, so.
Right, and I don't think those are in existence.
Too bad, that's gone now. Are you telling us, then, that the boundaries of the national historic district would still be the, the bigger areas?
Yes, it would be.
So is it strange to have?
No, not really.
National and local different boundaries?
No, not at all. On the west side, there's several of the local districts, there's the old, old Saginaw City District, there's the North Michigan District. Actually, there's other national districts that overlap some of these districts, so it's not unusual at all to have them overlap. I believe nationally, there's also a South Michigan Historic District that overlaps Old, Old Town District. And I know there's also a national district over by Heritage Square that in part overlaps this district.
In looking at the map, it, it may be just me, it always seems odd to me that the boundaries are so crazy. It would seem that it would, it would make so much more sense to try to be a little more inclusive and not have all these zigzags, and it would be easier to manage, but...
This is what the group, I believe they were out of Los Angeles, what they came up with based on the, based on the resources, historic resources that were in that area.
Yeah, that's the guiding light, I'm sure. And the historic district commission did ask for a couple of changes, I noticed, in the boundaries.
Yeah, I believe that there were a couple of changes made.
And they did that, I guess.
And the map that you have shows any changes that they would have made.
Well, I'm, I'm uneducated about this, really new to it, and what I'm trying to grasp here is, why would we do this?
Uh-oh. I just opened my notebook, did I do that?
No, somebody's got to move in here.
There we go. It's called the Energy Austerity Program. I don't know that I'm the person to give you that answer.
I mean, I'm, I'm hearing that one advantage is increased property values, but that hasn't been the experience in Saginaw. I'm hearing there are no more grants.
At this point, there aren't any, there may be some in the future.
So where did this come from, this movement to do this?
I don't know the whole history, there was some agreement made, and, and don't hold me to this because I'm not exactly sure, but there was a district, or there was an agreement made several years ago to help with the demolition of some of the buildings in that area in the national district, that if they were allowed to demolish some of those buildings, that this would come before the city council at a later date to create a local district. It didn't say that it had to happen, I'm not sure that all of the people involved even signed the original agreement, but that was part of the process, is that the opportunity for a local district would be brought up.
And of course, I think to answer your question, the other point that you made as a reason for doing this would be to have some control over what people can do to the historically significant homes that are in that building. It's, tell me if I'm wrong, it's, it's trying to prevent what happens every day, especially here, it seems like, which is that we just let a building get in worse and worse and worse shape, and then the decision's already made, it's too far gone. So this is trying to move against that.
That's true, but the problem that we've encountered in Saginaw is that some of these houses, because people move out and, and things are stolen out of those houses, they become beyond repair in a short amount of time. It doesn't take years for it to happen, sometimes it's a matter of a few months. We don't seem, because of the property values being so low, we don't seem to be able to have people come into the area to buy a historic home and fix it up because they don't see that they're going to get anything out of their investment for it. As an example, there was a property in the Heritage Square District that a woman, I guess, saw the property for sale online. She was from another state, she said, oh, it's a historic house, that's great, she came in and bought it, she put a large amount of money into the property, looked around at what property values were in, around the area, saw how much more she had to do with the house to bring it, make it look nice, and walked away from it. That house has since been demolished. Because there isn't the incentive at this point with increasing property values to make it worthwhile for someone in the neighborhood to do that. I'm not saying that people don't do that on their own, in fact, in this area, the central city district right now, there are people that have gone in and refurbished some of the houses and made them look very nice. But whether...
So the point of that would be that if, to take that same example, someone from out of the city or out of state or whatever, looked at a, a property here, if they knew at least that it was in a historic district, that would give them some confidence that, that people aren't, not going to come in and just totally change the character and run down, well, it wouldn't affect running down a property, but at least not change the character of the appearance, streetscape and all that of the, of the neighborhood.
That's true.
I have a question.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Corrus is headed, is that okay?
No, go ahead, go ahead, Your Honor.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
It's my understanding that either today or was, or tomorrow, the manager and staff are meeting with historical people, and I don't know whether it pertains to this or not. That meeting is tomorrow, and as far as I know, it does not pertain to this issue at all. Well, I'm not sure of that, and until, until I know what the outcome of that meeting is, I don't feel comfortable voting on this. I get, I get a little touchy with the word historical. Casa Museum is very historical. A house that's dilapidated and ready to collapse because it housed some particular doctor 100 years ago may not be historical.
Well, that's not the definition of historical. The definition is the actual appearance and type of construction of the building, not, not who lived it.
Actually, this... Well, I, I understand what you're saying, but taking, take an old, an old dilapidated house and trying to historically restore it because of its, of its previous owner, and that seems to be part of the criteria of making it, making it historical.
Doesn't have anything to do with the previous owner.
I'm not sure, however, until, until I hear the results of that meeting tomorrow, I'm, I'm not ready to vote on this.
Does anyone else know anything about the meeting tomorrow?
I know that it's to discuss some other issues, I had never heard that this was one of the issues. One thing I could suggest is that I could bring someone or several people from the historic district commission in front of you next month, if you prefer to do that.
I think that would be better.
Well, that would be okay. Is there any downside to delaying this one month?
No, because last, let's see, this month was the first month that anyone from the historic district commission went to the Cathedral Neighborhood Association, and next month, I know Bill Earnett is going to be back at the Cathedral District Meeting to answer more questions regarding this historic district, and after that, there will still be the time to have a public hearing and gather the signatures, so I don't see any of that being completed by the end of next month.
So us delaying this a month would not affect the timing of the public hearing?
No, I don't see anything.
Is that agreeable to everyone to delay this until next month?
Are you using the word delay table or postpone?
Well, you heard me.
I don't know, somebody, somebody tell me parliamentary which is correct.
Well, delay is not parliamentary, I'm sure.
I believe that, if I remember right, postpone is the correct term.
Postpone.
Because table would be till later in the same meeting.
Yeah.
Postpone.
Well, then I propose that we postpone this item until the next meeting.
With the understanding that we're going to have somebody here that knows what they're talking about.
Well, I agree with that.
Why we even need this, we need a little bit more definitive why this is needed. Because it's already happened once, you do it twice, you got the national, I get this one. And probably with the blessing of the city manager to make it easier for Larry.
For matter of discussion, any further discussion, I would, I would second the motion.
I did have a question, but I guess we should, we can...
Go right ahead.
And again, it goes to what we're seeing right now. I don't understand how it comes to us and really why we're doing what we're doing when the people, the people in the area really hasn't been talked to about this.
Well, that was one of my first questions, you know, why do we vote on this? And you, do you want to say anymore about that, or did you say all?
Well, see, part of the process is that several state agencies and the, and the city planning commission must be sent a packet with this information.
Okay.
That's one of the first steps. Whether things were handled correctly and not going to the neighborhood association earlier, that could be discussed.
It's like you're putting a car before the horse.
Right.
Is there, do you think, any likelihood that that public hearing would take place before our next meeting?
I would think not.
Yeah, so...
Because they're going to discuss it at the Cathedral District Meeting next month.
Well, that's all the more reason for us to have the historic district come talk to us.
And there would have to be 15 days notice and notices sent to everyone, and I don't see that happening by the end of next month.
It'll still be snowing then anyway.
It probably will.
Probably snowing right now. Get what else out.
Pessimist. All right. Make a motion, Larry.
I thought you just did it.
No, I didn't.
What did I second?
Oh, okay, I, I did propose, you're right. I proposed that we postpone, not delay.
That was a motion and I, and I supported it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. We did one hell of a job tonight.
Sorry?
If there is nothing else to come before this, whoa, wait a minute, public comment.
Turn the lights out.
We are adjourned.
Don't worry about that, we'll turn ourselves on.
I guess I do.